Seventeenth to order by roll call, please.
Smith present.
France and present.
Newman present. All those who are able, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, has everybody had a chance to read through the minutes?
Yeah, I have.
Alright, any changes to the minutes?
None.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes.
To move.
All those in favor?
Smith aye.
France aye.
Newman aye. Alright, we have a public hearing for land release, a 61A release for 193 to 195, Justice Hill Road cutoffs.
That won't be until 6:35.
Oh, alright. I thought it was a mistake because of our time change. Alright, so we are going to start with some appointments, and we will start with the appointment for members of the DPW Building Committee, as I see that they are here. So we will be appointing David Smith from the Select Board, Blaine Burchard from the DPW Board, he is not present, and Mark Gothier from Finance Committee. Any discussion?
Looking forward to getting this project moving.
I would welcome a motion that we appoint these three gentlemen to the DPW Building Committee.
Do we use the name gentleman? Just curious.
I do.
I would make a motion that we appoint David Smith, Blaine Burchard, Mark Gothier all to the DPW Building Committee.
To move.
Oh, maybe a second then. All those in favor?
France aye.
Smith aye.
Newman aye.
Thank you, Mark. And David.
Alright, we also have two appointments to the Fair Committee. Is anybody here to be appointed to the Fair Committee? No. Alright, so we have Amy Rug and Val Prunoe who wish to be appointed to the Fair Committee. Any discussion?
I just know in the past that they've helped out as it is, so it's about time I guess they get appointed.
Alright, well then I would welcome a motion that we appoint Amy Rug and Val Prunoe to the Fair Committee.
I make a motion that we appoint Amy Rug and Val Prunoe to the Sterling Fair Committee.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Smith aye.
France aye.
Newman aye. Alright, and then we have an appointment, a new police officer to be appointed.
Am I allowed to go a little bit out of order?
Oh, absolutely.
Scott, I had three things on the agenda, but if I can start with Scott.
Yes.
Since we're replacing him, you at least might be able to.
You can't replace him.
And actually, he's staying around town too, so. He's been here for almost 32 years, a couple of years in WPI. He's a 20-plus-year Air Force veteran. He did deployments in Cutter and Jordan. He and I have been friends for the 32 years. He, DJ, myself, and Deb MacArthur are pretty much the only ones left at this point. It's a whole new, it's a whole new group of people. He's been our firearms instructor, our armorer. He's part of the initial motorcycle patrol. He handles all our cruiser maintenance and ordering, things like that. And more importantly, to a lot of people, he was the guy, or is the guy, hasn't gone anywhere.
No.
That you could count on to cover a shift. A lot of people would call him on a Saturday night when they had plans, nobody else would take it, Scott would be the person. And he's going to be very hard to replace in that term. He is now a Sterling resident, so he's still going to be here in town. And additionally, if things go well, I think he has a job lined up in town. So his last official patrol day was July 8th. He's working on some of his vacation time and whatnot while he's doing some details and overtime. So he'll be around on patrol for another month, but after that, it'll be time to say goodbye, unfortunately. But we just wanted to thank him for all the time he's put in. And definitely, I know no other person that's put in as many man-hours as Scott has at the Department, without question.
Thank you.
You welcome us, Scott.
Thank you.
Can I get the bike?
Absolutely. You just want to ride around in the back?
No, he never gives me a ride.
That's why I got him in one seat.
Thank you so much for all you've done for all these years. It was fun to watch you.
Thank you very much. Been my honor, complete honor.
Very kind gentleman every time I've run into you in town. I appreciate that. So thank you, and I wish you well on your retirement.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate your service to the town. And it is a testament to the Department to see somebody like yourself do their, pretty much their entire career here in town. So all, the whole Department deserves congratulations for that.
Yeah, it's a great community to work for. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Alright, and then we have Travis. So as I said a month ago, we had a great, great group of applicants. It was very tough. In the end, we could have picked any of them, and the top five were very difficult. I'm sure any of them would have worked out. But the command staff, who spent a lot of time debating over it, wanted somebody who was going to be the best fit for the town, the best person that they wanted to work with, and had a lot to offer. And Travis was resoundingly the person they wanted, as somebody they wanted here to replace Scott. He's been in Princeton for 17 years. He's worked as a part-time officer. He's been full-time for 14 years. He's got his DMT certificate. He's been a field training officer. He's a firearms instructor. He does their TASER program. He's also a car seat program, which we've been, done great on. Sergeant Plouffe started years ago, and Sergeant Ferguson and Officer Mucci have run with it, and it's grown leaps and bounds. It'd be good to have Travis doing that, too. He's got his bachelor's degree from Worcester State. And again, my support is in that my command staff thinks Travis is the person to be here. So I'm asking you to appoint Travis as a full-time patrolman for the town.
I know Scott can't be replaced, but it sounds like you have the skills to do it, so that's fantastic, and thank you for choosing Sterling.
I thank everyone for putting their faith in me, and I hope to try to fill it as best as I can.
If Mike Pacaro can make it here, come for me.
Anybody.
Travis, do you do maintenance on cruisers? Because that seems to be missing from your.
I mean, I could if it.
A motorcycle.
No, that's not.
I guess one question I have is, did you start in Princeton when you were like 10 years old?
Right out of college, so whatever that is, basically. Actually, in college, I started as a dispatcher there and continued on to being a police officer.
Welcome to Sterling.
Thank you.
And he's not a threat to anybody for being too tall?
No, no, that's only, that's only true.
Managed to get an arrest or something, so he couldn't be here. He's working right now.
Alright, well, welcome to Sterling, Travis.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Alright, I would welcome a motion that we appoint Travis Russell to the Police Department.
To move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Smith aye.
Smith aye.
Newman aye. Welcome.
And I have my department heads thing. Do you guys want me to do that now, or you want to?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Maybe they want to stay.
Maybe they do.
Fascinating.
You know how it is, when the important things are over, everybody wants to get out, so.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
I know you guys have a lot on the agenda, so I'll try to make it fairly brief. The least, the least update is with the animal control officer. She's still out there working hard. She does a great job. She stays busy. She's got steady work. Love to see her at full-time at some point in time. We don't have to call for that at this point in time, but she's a great employee, and I can't say enough good about what she does around there. Dispatch Center, we hired two dispatchers. We put them through an academy, which was the first time we had done that. They spent five weeks in Milford or Maynard. They both graduated. The first week out, one of the, one of the ladies decided dispatching wasn't for her, which I appreciate that she didn't string us along for a little while. So we are still down one dispatcher. Our budget was over last year pretty significantly because we were filling a lot of the open shifts with cross-train patrolmen, and Aaron Permetic were helping take some of the shifts. Dave Johnson and Wendy Masolini, our part-time dispatchers, do try to take what they can. But the reality is, until we can fill that shift permanently or for long-term, we're always going to have that overages. Sergeant Palmeroy gets the 911 grant, and last year we got, I believe it's $23,000 that was reimbursed to it, so the number on Fred's books is actually a little bit lower. It's a reimbursement grant, so we don't file till somewhere in the middle of June, so it takes a little bit of time to get that money back. So it's not quite as bad as it looks, but if we could get full, long-term employees in there, things would be great. We have an interview tomorrow with a gentleman that's interested in the position. The dispatcher and myself are going to meet with him and see where that gets us. Michelle Brackenair is, is wanting to retire. She wanted to be out of here at the beginning of July. She's agreed to stick around for a little bit. She wants to be out of here before snow flies, so we can do everything in our power. She's been very gracious in extending her time, and we're doing what we can there. And I'll add, just throw in Deb MacArthur, who's, again, she's been here longer than Scott or I. She, when we did the hiring for the police position, every single one of the candidates commented on how well she ran our Facebook page, which I thought was an interesting and odd comment, but she does it pretty much exclusively. Just a little kudos to her for doing such a good job. And then, the Police Department, let's see. The budget is pretty good. The last couple of years, the patrolmen have gotten a little over 3% raise, and we've been raising the budget at 3%, so we're falling behind a little bit. I think next year there'll have to be some type of adjustment to catch us up. The patrolmen will be negotiating their contracts, so we'll have a little better idea where that is. But eventually, that, if we keep on the downside of the road, some of the services, some of the child seats, some of the special community policing events, things like that. For the time being, right now, it's pretty good, but it is something that I had already talked about addressing, and it's something I'll have to talk about with the Finance Committee next year. The station continues to be a burden, is exactly what I have written. Chuck's been great at addressing our needs. He's there, at one point, we were talking daily, to the, to the degree that I think he might have actually been dodging my phone calls. And just when we thought we had everything straightened out again, we had another air compressor go out, so we need a, I think he said it was a $20,000 compressor and a new air handler. And for once, we thought everything was the way we needed it to be, but not so. The squadron redo that we were given money at last year's town meeting was done in June, end of May, beginning of June. Came out amazing. It gave some more storage space for the officers, it gave sturdier writing surfaces, easier to clean countertops, things like that. That's exactly what we needed for someplace that's used 24 hours a day, every day of the week. I did not put any painting in the original estimate, just as an oversight, so I'll be looking into doing that, because we had to fill some holes within the cabinets and things. But, but that project came out excellent. Kitchen Associates was the low bidder, and they did a fantastic job. The ARPA money you guys gave me to get a new camera system, my original quote was around 23,000 or 24,000, I believe. The next quote was in the 30s, and going back to how great Chuck's been, he saw our truck driving by on Route 12 with Warren Security. Come to find out, the owners are from town, they came out, took a look, and originally we had broken it up, Bill and I had broken it up to an inside project and an outside project, for a total of, I think it's 12 or 14 cameras. And the quotes I was getting for 20 to 30 grand were just for the inside cameras. Warren Security came in, was able to reuse some of our old system, and I think their initial quote for the inside was five. We added the outside cameras, and they added an evidence room camera for all of $8,000. It was fantastic, so whatever, we're turning back, turned it back to the town, 14, 15 grand that we were able to save, all because Chuck happened to see him driving down the street and they're town residents, so it worked out amazingly. Staffing, Drew, you guys hired last month, he's off his field training this week, I believe. Everybody's more than happy to have him, he's going to be a great fit here. He's out stopping cars, made an arrest tonight on, on one of the traffic rants that Lieutenant Fugere wrote. That's why Sergeant Ferguson's here, too. They're trying to up their presence out there on the, on the, on the state's dollar instead of ours, which is nice. We have a number of training opportunities coming up. We have our new tasers, our electronic control weapons. We'll be doing that shortly. We'll be getting new firearms, and both of those are going to take a little bit of time to, to get used to. Those were both part of the capital requests. I was talking with Andy DePietro today, and he's got the final quotes coming in for the firearms, and they're three months out, so that'll take a little bit of time to get them in and going, but we are working on that. We did a active shooter event at the school a month ago. Officer DePietro, he's becoming a leading instructor in this alert active shooter training. He's really taken to it. He's an exceptional instructor. For the limited time he had when he did his first one, did an amazing job, and we integrated with the Fire Department on our response. Even though we did it at the school, it would fit in any other business here in town as multiple employees, teaching building searches and removal of injured people. It was a great event, it was 16 hours total, and it was something we can, hope we can continue to do and stay sharp on it. We started the bike patrol again. Sergeant Ferguson came to me and asked if we could find some money for some new bikes. We had that in the past. Again, one of the things I've always touted about our department is, our guys are out there, and then people know their names, and we'll talk to them. The bike patrol gives them another opportunity to be face-to-face with people, plus it allows them to see things that they wouldn't normally see driving by in a cruiser. So he and Officer Mucci went up with bike training, and hopefully we'll get some more people, so you might have seen them around town, and as money allows, we'll have them out there. Lieutenant Fugere's going to add some bike patrol hours to one of our next grants, so we'll be able to do that. On that same day, Sergeant Palmeroy went and got an FAA certified with the drone program, got his FAA license to fly drones. I'm looking to find some funding for that. Those, those are $9,000 for a good one, so that'll be my next project I'm going to try to find, get Sergeant Palmeroy and another person out there to be able to use it, looking for people, or accidents, or whatever. See it for a million, even just for PR, it's great for PR at some of our events. Beach update. We had a lot of problems last year. We have, we've had some growing problems, just people causing little ruckus, parking complaints. We added a third camera, so we now have a better view down there without having to drive. It's just a cheaper ring camera, but it works really well, and I could see through the live view notification that officers have been checking it. Ryan Meridian's been real proactive, working with us on signage. It's getting to the point that if there's not a sign every 2.6 feet, somebody will park there. We're, we're way away from the beach area, and we're still having parking problems, ended up this weekend. Lane Palmeroy was, sent me an email that we needed more signage even further up the street, because if there's not a sign there, they will park there. So I'm not sure what the end solution is. We're trying, but they're pushing it as far as they can. Let's see. Lieutenant Fugere got a $20,000 municipal road safety grant, which was the traffic data collection stuff we got a while back, and now we're doing some more of the, the actual road work. And then he got the $45,000 burn grant, which allowed us to do the alert active shooter training. It allowed us to purchase rifle, armor, helmets, some emergency gear that went with it. So we have, in the worst-case scenario, we haven't bought as much equipment as we can use for that, some battering rams and things like that, so he's been really proactive at getting us grants to help us, will help us in the future, or hopefully we'll never have to use, to be honest with you. And I think that's pretty much it. I mean, we're busy, the people are working hard, we're, it's going to be sad to see Scott go. Things have changed a lot, especially adding new dispatchers, I mean, 50% new dispatchers, we're turning over their officers, but I think it brings a little bit of excitement. It kind of invigorates people a little bit, and I think in the end, it's going to be good. I'm sure that's what they said when I started, 30, September, 32 years ago. But I think that's where, I think we're pretty good.
Watched that. That's a lot.
I know, I was going to cut it down, too, but.
You just want to show off?
Yeah.
Now, it's good to hear that the officers are taking pride in their work and reaching out and getting these grants and getting these monies, getting this training. I love it. Sounds good. The bikes, you're talking about just pedal bikes?
Pedal bikes, yeah. Yeah.
Or remind them they're not allowed on the fairgrounds midway.
Yeah, they were on the, they went to the beach, they did the rail trail, they were down, I think one of them ran into.
I ran into them on the rail trail. I really love seeing them out on the bicycles, and it makes me happy to know, they said they love it as well, because they're able to talk to the community when they're out on the bikes. And I think it's great that our officers do engage with the community regularly, it makes a big difference.
It does.
So I appreciate that.
For sure.
What I feel about your department, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Alright, next up, we have an update from our Town Planner.
Good evening. I'm Steve Wallace, your Town Planner. And I was with you in January to over what I hope to accomplish this calendar year. And now I'm back at the midway point to give you an update on where things stand, and to give you a little brief presentation on the zoning amendments that the Planning Board and I are working on for next year's town meeting. So you've all got in your package my little update. I'll just go right down the list. The first item is update the town's floodplain bylaw to state standards in anticipation of receiving a new set of flood rate insurance maps. Our current maps were done in 1982. They've been in the process of being updated for the last four years. I wrote the bylaw last year, thinking that we would get the maps last December, but they pushed back the day of receipt to this December. So we'll get the new flood maps this December, and our bylaw is ready to roll for the next town meeting. It's been reviewed and approved by the state, Town Council, and our Building Commissioner, who's going to be the person enforcing it. Second item, work with the Planning Board to prepare a new multifamily zoning overlay district that will help us comply with the state law, the new state law from a couple years ago, for MBTA communities. Sterling, the state considers to be an MBTA-adjacent community, meaning we abut LeMonster, which has an MBTA train station. So even though the LeMonster train station is in the north of LeMonster, 10 miles away from us, we're still considered an MBTA-adjacent community, and we need to find an area of town, 20 to 25 acres in size, that's large enough to accommodate some multifamily housing by right, as opposed to the way we currently allow it, which is special permit. I've got the bylaw drafted, and the problem is, we've been having trouble finding a suitable parcel for the overlay district. The state rejected our first choice, which was the land in the vicinity of the Northgate housing complex. We figured that was the most practical location, seeing it abutted LeMonster, could potentially tie into LeMonster sewer, and affordable housing was already being built there. The state rejected that simply because the frontage that, that would allow access to that land is in LeMonster, and the Northgate project was approved through a 40B comprehensive permit and not allowed by right. So it was back to the drawing board in terms of finding a new location for the overlay district. I got a grant from Mass Housing Partnership, which has allowed us to work with the Regional Planning Commission and their mapping service. They are currently running the numbers on three or four parcels that might be suitable for the overlay district. I hope to have the overlay district location nailed down by early August. At that point, I can send the location map and the bylaw to the state for one last approval, and from there, I could start sharing it with the people, and we bring it to next year's town meeting. It's important to do this if we want to remain in compliance with the law, because if we're not in compliance with this new law, then we lose our eligibility for a variety of state grants for infrastructure and housing. Now, as you know, Bill and I recently applied for a, a one-stop-for-growth infrastructure grant to do an infrastructure project in our town center here. That grant went in in June. We'll find out if we got it at some point in the fall. So that covers the MBTA zoning. Third item on my list was work with the Planning Board to add the various types of kennels to the zoning bylaw's table uses. We're going to put that one off until next year. You'll see that the next item on my to-do list was undertake a comprehensive update of the town's zoning bylaw, and we talked about this in January, that this was a mammoth effort, and if we were going to do it in-house, we need to break it up into manageable pieces. So this year, the Planning Board and I are working on the economic development aspects of zoning. Next year, we'll work on the residential aspects of zoning, and that's where we'll take up the kennel zoning issue. And the third year of our rezoning odyssey, should I make it that far? That's when we'll take up whatever's left that needs to be fixed in the zoning bylaw. So there's, I'm going to give you more on the economic development zoning amendments in our presentation just a bit, so I'll move on with the update here. Let's see, number five, work with the Economic Development Committee on two projects, the Wayfairing Signage Project and the Village Center Building Facade Improvement Program. Well, we have placed two "Welcome to Sterling" signs at a couple of our major entry points, so those signs are up. But the Town Center Wayfairing Sign Program and the Building Facade Program, those are on hold until whether we find out whether we got the money for the downtown infrastructure grant, because there's no sense in putting up those signs if they're going to just get torn up as part of the infrastructure project. So that's, that's on hold for the moment. Item number six, work with the Open Space Committee, plan trail new, new trail lengths within Sterling and our neighboring communities. I recently got a grant from the Regional Planning Commission to put together a map for the Open Space Committee that'll show all of our chapter lands, all of our protected lands and natural resources, and they will use that map to plot new trail lengths and prioritize lands for protection as they come up for sale in, when people take land out of the chapter program, like someone's doing tonight. So that map should be ready by the end of summer. Number seven, continue to assist the town administrator with earth removal permits. Haven't really had any in the past nine months.
Just the two usual months.
Continued searching for land for senior housing. Well, we found a piece of town land that's suitable. Unfortunately, it's landlocked. Unfortunately, it's landlocked. And in front of it is a piece of land owned by Clinton Water Department. And Bill and I are trying to work with the town of Clinton to have them grant us an access strip so we can get back to the backland and build some senior housing. So we'll keep at that. Number nine, continue to manage the planning board's caseload on an ongoing basis. I'd say that's pretty much half of my job day-to-day. Dealing with applicants, circulating plans for review, getting them reviewed by our engineering consultant, making sure everybody has the information necessary so that when they come to the board, the board has the information they need to make informed decisions. Number 10, continue to participate in the Regional Planning Commission's Brownfields Program and Comprehensive Economic Development Planning Committee. Regional Planning Commission just got a $500,000 grant to do Phase One environmental assessments on projects where there may be contamination. The idea being that they would, they would look at the property, do some soil testing. If there is contamination, they come up with a remediation plan so that we can put these properties back into productive use. I put the call out to all town departments, if they know of any such properties, let's get them nominated for the program and see where it takes us. Regional Planning Commission is in the process of doing their five-year update to the Regional Economic Development Plan. And for the first time ever, we have four projects in Sterling listed on that plan. Performance Zone, Town Center, Sterling Inn, and the Onyx Property across from Miola's, which, once they get finished hauling earth out of there in the next fifteen to twenty years, that's gonna be a nice piece of flat land that we can use for an industrial park. Other than that, continue to look for grants and represent the town's interests at state and regional meetings. So that's pretty much my update, and I will pause now for questions before we go over zoning amendments.
Steven, have you heard anything about the state taking another look at that chapter and the MBTA thing? I know some towns have had issues with it already and are actually in court, but have you heard any scuttlebutt about they may look at it again?
My inclination is they are not looking to revisit that. They've got compliance from most of the towns that it affects. There's really only a handful that are not in compliance and have said that they're not going to and that they're in litigation with the state over this.
But are all these towns that are in compliance, are they in our situation where we really don't have train station?
Most of them are, are MBTA communities proper, meaning that they have either rail or subway service in their town. I don't think the state is looking to revisit the law as it applies to towns like ours where we don't have MBA commuter rail or subway, and we don't have the sewer necessary to support the housing in the density that the law requires, which is still an issue.
Okay, I have another question on, when you say you were looking, or the landlocked land, where is that?
No, Awood Road.
Awood Road?
We'd love to get any access through another parcel. That didn't work out, it was right around this time last year with an appraisal, so now we're looking at going through Clinton Water Works land to see if we can get it right away and move it through there.
Mr. Santoro wants to jump in. He has friends in Clinton.
I know a lot of people.
I know.
Is, um, is the guy that's in charge of the, well, he used to be in charge of TPW, he's probably retired like me.
He just retired, yeah.
But, um, what's his name? Stetson G. I can't think of him.
Well, we've been working with their town administrator a little bit, and it's not a planner that they have, I don't know what his title is there.
Economic Development Director.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Duffy.
To see if we can get something rolling.
Fifty-foot strip of land gets us back to the backland.
Just curious.
McDonald. I'm sorry, that's, I just remembered.
That's right, he is DPW.
Yeah, he is DPW.
And Wada.
Yeah.
He retired. Just retired.
He did retire, he just retired, okay.
Very recently.
He's just a kid.
Couple months ago.
Just a kid!
Yeah.
Oh, he really is just a kid!
What's the age limit on a kid?
Huh?
What's the age limit on a kid?
This is old enough.
David, any questions for Steven?
No, I don't have any questions. Just got a very nice, comprehensive report, and I appreciate the quants that you continue to go after.
Do we know if the state would offer any extensions for the MBTA, since you've definitely been trying for a long time? And I believe the deadline was December of 2025, right? So it would have to pass our town meeting and...
They know our timeline in terms of bringing it to next year's town meeting. They've been well aware of that, and they're, they're fine with it.
But if it doesn't go through, then we're still...
Mmm.
Yeah.
We'll find out.
Well, by then too, we might know what the litigation, how the litigation will put these other towns. Holden's one of them, right?
Holden is one of them.
All right, and did you have a presentation for us?
Zoning amendments. Okay, so in our three-year odyssey to revise and update your zoning bylaw, we're breaking it into pieces. This first year, we're working on the economic development aspects of economic development. So what are we gonna cover tonight? There we are. The importance of economic development, cost of community services, impact on residential tax bills, and zoning changes we're proposing to spur economic development. Benefits of economic development, we all know them. Create jobs, hopefully living wage jobs. And if you have a good job, that helps promote a stable housing situation. You have a stable housing situation, you've got a stable family situation. If you've got a good job and your family's been living in the same house for a while, you're more than likely to get involved in civic matters, whether it's volunteering for one of our towns, many fine municipal boards, or participating in civic organizations, or volunteering for youth sports, or what have you. And lastly, but not least, is stabilizing local tax rates. So, stabilizing local tax rates, are you sure about that?
I am.
Cost of Community Service Studies, what are they? It's an attempt to estimate how much it costs a municipality to provide services to various types of land uses versus how much those uses generate in taxes. Who prepares these studies? Colleges, civic advocacy organizations, and municipal research bureaus. Okay, so such a study was done for Sterling specifically back in 2009. It was done by the American Farmland Trust, and they've done over fifty cost-of-community-service studies for New England communities. And they all, the numbers may vary a little bit town to town, but they all have the same bottom line. Economic development generates more in tax revenue than it costs the town to service. In Sterling's case, for every tax dollar generated by economic development, it costs the town 26 cents to provide services for. So that's a plus 74 cents for every tax dollar generated. Contrast that to residential development, where it costs the town a buck nine to provide municipal services for every tax dollar generated by residential development. So for residential development, we're down nine cents for every tax dollar generated. There's really only two types of housing that pay more in taxes than the cost of service. One is municipal, uh, one is senior housing, for the obvious reason that they don't have kids in the school system. And the others are mansions. Oops, we, uh, let's get down here. Okay. So let's look at some tax information. This table here has tax information for Sterling and some comparable towns. I tried to choose towns that I thought were comparable to Sterling in terms of population size and demographic makeup. They're all, I, I didn't want to use a Lemonster, or a Worcester, or a Fitchburg, so I looked for towns that had a similar makeup. They're all from Worcester County with the exception of Stowe. Stowe is fairly nearby, and they have a lot of the same characteristics as Sterling, being a primarily rural town. So the towns in the first column, second column is the average single-family tax bill for these towns for the year 2023. Third column is the increase in that tax bill since 2015. And the fourth column is commercial and industrial development as a percentage of that town's tax base. Towns in the top of the table, they have a low amount of commercial development as a percentage of their tax base. And as you can see, they have high-average single-family tax bills, and the increase in those tax bills since 2015 have been much higher than the towns below on the second part of the table, which have a significant amount of economic development as their tax base. You see that their average single-family tax bills are much lower, and the year-to-year rise in the tax bill is much lower as well. So for me, that proves, that proves my point that on average towns that have a significant commercial and industrial tax base, they tend to have lower single-family tax bills, and the year-to-year rise in those tax bills is much lower than those towns that don't have a significant amount of commercial and industrial development. So that's my argument that economic development helps stabilize local tax rates. With me so far?
Okay, with you.
So let's have a few Sterling land use statistics. We're about 20,000 acres in size. Approximately 38% of our land is permanently protected, meaning it will never be built on. Approximately 13% of the land has limited protection. Now, this is land in the state's chapter program. The taxation program that offers a lower tax rate if you keep your land in agriculture or forestry. That land can be pulled out of the chapter program at any point in time and developed after they pay a tax penalty. So that land is not considered permanently protected, just temporarily protected. 93% of your land is owned for residential development. 7% of your land is owned for commercial and industrial development. That includes the town center and your performance zone. You've only got 161 acres left for commercial and industrial development, and we'll talk a bit about that some more going forward. Okay. So, new industrial development looks for four things when they're sizing up a town to come to. Good highway access, we have that. Route 190, I-190 goes right through town. We've got an exit in the north of town, and we're darn close to the exit in West Boylston, so two exits. Municipal water and sewer. Well, we have municipal water, and we have an excellent lighting department that offers great high-speed internet access. We don't have municipal sewer, and we're not likely to get it anytime soon. They also look for parcels of land of 20 acres and more. We only have five industrially-zoned parcels, five acres, or 20 acres or more. Three of them are landlocked. One of them is the Onyx Property across the street from Miola's. They also look for a timely and predictable permitting process. More on that as we go on here. Sterling has several disadvantages for economic development. No municipal sewer, 38% of our land being permanently protected, 25% of our land is regulated by the State Watership Protection Act. You allow residential development in your commercial districts, and the consequence is that your commercially-zoned land is being slowly eaten away by residential development. You have poorly laid-out commercial and industrial districts. You've got one industrial district that sits smack dab on a piece of DCR land, and it's never gonna be developed for industry. You've got another industrial zoning district in the southeast corner of town near Clinton, where it's got great flat land that's great for economic development, near a railroad line and everything. No access to a road. It's all landlocked. And the land in front of it, blocking that district from the road, all owned by DCR. So, uh, who's gonna develop that district if they can't get their product on the road? And lastly, we have a lengthy and disjointed permitting system. And as an example, if a new business requires a special permit from the zoning board and site plan review from the planning board, they spend two or three months with the zoning board getting their special permit, then they go to the planning board for two or three months to get their site plan approval. And then, as we found out recently, there's always the potential for conflict between the conditions imposed by the zoning board on the special permit and the planning board on, on their conditions for the site plan. Whose conditions take precedence? Well, we're gonna get that sorted out in the near future. We're gonna have an all-boards meeting with town council and see what we can do to rectify that. A better way to do it, and that is next. So, what zoning amendments are we proposing to encourage new economic development? Replace the current performance zone and its 15 pages of Kafkaesque regulations that go with it that nobody can understand how to use. We will replace it with a new economic district called the Gateway Enterprise District. And the uses that'll go in there, those were largely derived from the public input we, we had at our March Economic Development Forums. If you remember, we had a couple public forums on economic development back in March. Both were very well-attended, and they gave us an inclination as to what the people... Both were very well-attended, and they gave us an inclination as to what the people want to see in the new Gateway Enterprise District. We also want to expand and modernize the commercial and industrial options in the zoning bylaws table of uses. And we propose moving the special permit granting authority for commercial and industrial uses from the zoning board to the planning board. So if, if a new business needs both a special permit and site plan review, it's one-stop shopping with the planning board. No more two to three months with the zoning board getting your special permit than another three months with planning getting your site plan approval. You know, that could be altogether six months, and that's a lot of time for a business that wants to get up and running.
And it's only one fee also.
Excuse me, Bill?
One fee.
One fee, one board handling both permits, one set of approval conditions. That's what we're proposing. We also suggest deleting residential development as a permitted use in your commercial district, and reserving what you have left for commercial land for commercial development. And enact site plan regulations that will apply to all non-residential development projects. Right now, in your zoning bylaw, you have a provision that enables the planning board, we're getting towards the end.
You're fine.
You have a provision in your zoning that enables the planning board to adopt site plan regulations, which typically spell out what you need to show on your site plan, what you need for submission materials, and our site development standards for lighting, landscaping, parking, building facade, signage. Now, you have such regulations for your performance zone, but that's the only place in town where those regulations are in effect. We're proposing a set of site plan regulations that will apply to economic development, no matter where it takes place in town. I've found that developers are more than willing to comply with your site design standards if they know what they are. And right now, uh, other than the performance zone, it's really up to the whim of whoever's on the planning board to decide what they want to see in terms of site design. That's not the way to do it. We want to have, um, a set of site plan regulations with design standards that developers can know how to design their site plan right from the get-go. So that's what we're proposing. Where are we at now? Well, other newer initiatives, I've already covered this in my first part of the talk, and BTA zoning and floodplain zoning, so I'm going to skip over this. Next steps. Review the changes with town council. Uh, we've done that. I've gotten town council's feedback, and they've been integrated into our bylaw changes. Our bylaw changes are now with the planning board. I wanted to give them first crack at offering revisions. We're going to talk about that at our upcoming meeting. I'm hopeful that by early August, these zoning amendments, amendments will be finalized, and we can post them online for the people to look over. They'll be on the planning board webpage, and we'll provide a link from the front page of the town's website. From there, I'm going to spend the next six months going around to all of Sterling's various boards, commissions, and committees, and explaining what we're doing and why we want to do it. This is the critical step that Sterling has been missing with your zoning amendments in the past. You really need to take the time and make the effort to go around to all of your various boards and committees, and hold public forums on what you're doing and why you're doing it. Get people comfortable with what you want to do, have them know about it, so that it's not a surprise when they show up at town meeting. The last thing you want is for someone to show up at town meeting, read through the warrant, and see a zoning article, and go, "Well, what the hell is this? Where did they come up with this?" So you've got to do the necessary advance work to get the word out and meet with the people and get their input. And for the love of God, Sterling, stop trying to revise zoning amendments on the floor of town meeting. That's a really dumb way to handle zoning. Your zoning amendments should be well-vetted and well-considered before they even show up to town meeting, and that's what I'm trying to do with the process I just outlined to you tonight. Thank you for your time.
Any further questions for Stephen?
Jesus.
Very nicely done, Stephen. And I like the idea of pulling it all together. It's something we've talked about in the past, but obviously didn't get there. I mean, economic development, and talked about it, and planning, but we didn't get there. But this looks like a good step to getting to where we need to be. And, and to make it a little simpler for the businesses to come into town, I mean, that's the most frustrating thing, is to see that these businesses have to go to three or four different, never mind three months in one place, but, you know, you're also talking about the Department of Health, the planning board, DPW gets involved sometimes, I mean, it's a lot. So if we can condense that for them, maybe they'll actually come.
And I just want to say, for every development plan that goes before the planning board, those plans get circulated to all the departments, and I make sure that they give me their feedback. So that's usually done before they even show up to a public hearing.
It's a great thing. So, thank you.
Nice work. Keep up the good work. You've taken on a monumental challenge here.
At the all-boards meeting, we're trying to find a date that works for the three different, obviously, the select board, planning board, and zoning board. Trying to come up with a date to go over both the zoning changes and also have town council here to go over the responsibilities in the process, uh, as we stand and, and where we may go in the future, uh, depending on where that lands in town. So, next month or so.
Do we have a date for that yet?
Well, we have three potential dates. We're just trying to get the responses from folks, uh, to see where we end up. So, it's not perfect for anybody at this point, but, uh, perhaps it can also be filmed, so folks that can't make it can see it after.
Are any more public forums planned in the fall or spring?
There will be. I'd like to hold at least a couple more. One in the fall, uh, say one around November, and maybe another one in January. I'd like to get through meeting with all the other boards, commissions, and committees, and get their input before we have those forums. So, um, we'll go from there.
I just want to add one more thing. I think it was in 1995 I purchased a piece of property in town to operate a business out of, and I had to go before the board to get a special permit because I did not comply. And one of the gentlemen on the board, somebody suggested I petition to change the zoning in town. And one of the members of the board said, he chuckled and said, "This young man won't live long enough to change his zoning in his town."
Well, I'm optimistic that we can do better, so let's give it a try.
Thank you for all the work, Stephen, and to the rest of your board.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, John, Carl. Thank you.
Jim?
We do have another appointment for our building inspector, who I know could not make it this evening. Did you guys get a chance to look over the application and, well, the resume?
The three town administrators and Tony all met with him, uh, so where? Fine, and obviously it's on our, our agenda first, and then the other two for their appointment, but unavailable tonight, so we'll have them come back in the future.
My only question was, with running two businesses, they definitely, he definitely has the time, it's not going to be a problem. Okay? Any other questions?
Dale.
D'Amico.
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 I don't have any questions with it.
I know Dale, and he could probably run six businesses. He's not unlike, um, our current building inspectors. Tony.
Yeah.
You know, they make, um, old-fashioned work ethic.
I would welcome a motion that we appoint Dale D'Amico as the building inspector.
I would second. Oh, so moved.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Smith, I.
Grant, so I.
You and I. All right, it's the moment we've been waiting for here, the back. We have the host community agreement for the botanists. Some discussion on that.
Should I sort of?
So, obviously, we entered into a post-community agreement in 2019 as they were opening up. Obviously, the zoning and, and legislature allowed for it. That is both expiring, and the current one in the new CCC Cannabis Control Commission regulations has found that it is not in compliance. Correct me if I get anything wrong.
Doing great.
Uh, I believe we expire in October this year. Uh, so the state has come out with a model post-community agreement. It basically gives you, I don't know, two different drop-down boxes and places to put the contact information. Uh, so it's very few things that you can change in here. Uh, we just had to make sure that we have the authorized, uh, operations correct. If we were to have any community impact fees, obviously, if we vote it, it would be the effective date, term, and termination. I don't believe that we can go anything beyond three years at this level, and then the contact information, uh, on the back, um, where those items would be. So, I don't know, if you'd like to?
The only thing I'll mention to you, uh, because my firm is a marijuana law firm, it's all we do, and we represent about 100 companies across the state, so we're seeing this over and over again. Uh, there's a section in it, Section 5C, and it talks about generally occurring fees. And what they're generally trying to get you to do is put down the types of fees that you might charge other than impact fees. Sewer fees, or water fees, or those things. Right now, the way I think you have it filled out, it says there will be no other impact fees. My sense is that's going to get rejected, uh, when we hand that in, because it's not what they're looking for. So, it, I guess what we, I think what they're looking for you to do is to fill in specific types of fees that you charge to any business, that you would be charging to us, or you might be charging to us as well. That's the only thing I'd say to you. So maybe if, if you're inclined to approve this model host-community agreement, maybe you approve it, uh, and allow, you know, those, those additions of those general types of, of fees.
So we're talking about water, electric, all that? The simple things like that they want to know?
The thing, yeah. I think they're trying to avoid confusion, and they don't want people to be sort of blindsided by what fees may be coming at them. To be honest with you, this is all overreached by the commission a little bit.
No way.
Who would have thought, huh? Uh, but we're stuck in the middle, because we, we hand these things in, and then all, and think we've done the right thing, and then we get a back rejection, we got to hand it in again. Most of the time, we have to guess at what they're objecting to. Sometimes these things go back and forth three times. So I'm just pointing out one that I, I know is going to come down the pike. Be nice to try to avoid that one. And so if, if, like I said, if we can approve it, I'm happy to, you know, take a look at whatever you put in, uh, for those generally occurring fees, and, you know, I can't imagine it's going to be anything that we'd object to, and then we're happy to sign it with you.
Are you currently working on the DEP with the wastewater situation? Are you handling that?
I know that's being worked on. I've just gotten involved, so, you know, I'm peripherally, uh, I have knowledge of it, but not enough knowledge to talk about it. But, you know, if at some point that's something that you want to talk about, we're happy to, to sort of let, you know, discuss that one as well.
Okay, we did. Did you have any questions, Gail?
I do.
So we do have someone from our Board of Health, Gail Hasset.
Yeah, hi. We're supposed to, you guys are supposed to keep, uh, three years of record with the wastewater, and we have no records.
Okay.
And they tell us we have no record.
Okay.
So that's kind of scary, because that's pretty toxic stuff that's just getting, um, going out into the land. So I, I hope you take that in consideration before you redo it, because I think that it needs to be fixed.
Listen, I, we understand.
Just so you know.
We understand we have to deal with that with you.
Yes.
Um, you know, and, and we will.
Okay. Well, basically, we've been working with you for a few months, and we really have a good word for it.
I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, if you guys were really working on it.
I just got involved, and so I'm, I'm happy to work with you on it.
Yeah, no, no problem. I just want to, you know, in all fairness, I just want to be real.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
So perhaps we could put this on our next agenda, work on the, uh, the five, five C items, and perhaps finalize it at the next agenda, and maybe have a little more information relative to the Board of Health item as well.
Is two weeks enough time to get everything clarified?
The fees should be pretty simple, I, I'm not worried about that piece.
Any other questions from the board?
Not really. Just kind of taken aback by the fact that, I'm just taken aback by the fact that they want that type of an impact. I mean, everybody pays for water, everybody pays for electric.
I don't understand why it's necessary.
Yeah. All right, but we're not on the commission, so if we were, we wouldn't be sitting here. We'd be making a boatload of money. But, all right, I'm, I'm fine to, if you don't mind, we'd like to wait. I'm fine with that.
Motion that we continue to our next meeting to discuss the 5C.
Okay, do we need, um, Mr. Silverman to come back for that, or?
If we get everything straightened out, then I don't know that he needs to, needs to come back, uh, whatever information relative to the Board of Health is, uh, up for them. But for this, I think if we get the 5C section squared away, we should be all set.
Shouldn't be hard.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
There is a motion to, a motion to continue to our next meeting, the 31st.
Smith, I.
In favor?
Grant, so I.
You and I.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night. Nice meeting you. It's crazy. Next up to sign an amendment to the Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition.
We've been in this for many years. The only change is that the town managing it is moving from Spencer to Shrewsbury. Uh, that is the only change.
Any other questions about the Stormwater Coalition? I would welcome a motion that we sign the amendment to the Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition.
So moved.
All in favor?
Smith, I.
Grant, so I.
You and I. All right, we have some year-end financial transfers.
They are presented there. There's one, two, three, four, five, six. There's about eight of them totaling about $90,000. That should come down, uh, as Chief Godet noted, with some grant funds that they are awaiting. Uh, but this is allow, to allow us to get those covered, uh, with interdepartmental transfers. And then, uh, the reserve fund transfers, which, I don't think they're on there, we covered the trash. There was another tablet here. Uh, there was about $30,000 based on the tonnages. So, Finance Committee typically takes care of those, and the interdepartmental, you guys will sign off on.
Yes, we reviewed them, uh, with the Finance Committee, and the only one that raised any questions was?
The overage and the dispatch, which we discussed tonight.
Any other questions? Motion that we approve the year-end financial transfers.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Smith, I.
You and I?
Grant, so I.
And we have an approval of the Barefoot Half Marathon. Everybody get a chance to look that over.
This is the third, fourth year?
Yeah, it's going to be. Yeah, it's going before, yes. It's nine.
Questions? Looks like they have everything in order. And that does start since Sterling ends in Shrewsbury, probably only in town for five minutes.
Kids are not fast, they run it.
I think it's bicycling, it said, right?
No.
No, oh, is, okay.
Truly a barefoot.
Something about bicycling.
Allow us to get that down.
Yeah, all right. All right. For questions, I would welcome a motion that we approve the Barefoot Half Marathon.
So moved.
Stephen.
All those in favor?
Smith and I.
You and I?
Grant and I.
All right.
Do we have the beach sign?
Yes. So now we have a agenda item to accept the donation for a beach sign. Working with?
The East Lake Washakeam Association had brought it up a couple months ago. We are trying to match up our new signage with their signage. They're looking to donate one specific to the boating regulations they have over by the boat launch. We obviously will have our bylaws and rules of the beach and shoal and hark on ours, but we're trying to match them up so they have a similar design, so that things look at least somewhat cohesive down there with the grant funds that we do have from the state. So we would have to accept that donation and then hopefully we can order them all together and get them installed.
And we are able to match them and everything?
Yeah, we're just working on the final wording and pricing.
Okay. Any questions?
And we thank the association for the donation.
Make a motion to accept the donation from the Lake Association for a new sign at the web.
Stephen.
All those in favor?
Smith and I.
You and I? And yes, a thank you to the East Lake Washakeam Association for the donation of the sign for the bow ramp. Got some time before our public hearing here. Do you want to go over your?
Sure. I don't have, I don't have 20 minutes or 15 minutes left of stuff, but even that, I don't think it's close.
I didn't even know how to talk slow.
Just a couple updates on the current projects that we have going. Maple Street should have been pretty much completed today with the last of the paving. The beach is still moving along, we're working on the signage. I believe that the new grills have been or are getting installed pretty soon. The recreation programs are going on during the morning, so technically the beach is not open to the public at that point. Obviously, it's loaded with kids, so things are going well. You know, it's a, it's a good program for, for the local, local youth. The drainage is working out well. It seems to be collecting a lot from the parking lot. We are trying to reconcile what we have spent to see what we, so finish that up so we can see what we have for additional projects once we have the signage update from Sheila is that the COA flooring is going very well and should be right on schedule. And using the 1835 of the First Church seemed to be working out pretty well as secondary locations. We've taken care of the end-of-year budget items. We're still waiting for a couple grant reimbursements. The complete streets, which is the Maple Street project, the two that the chief had mentioned, the downtown design for the water and stormwater grant, so we're just waiting on those funds to zero those accounts. Obviously, the departments are working on their budget capital items moving forward. The lift and elevator, or the elevator modernization project is coming along nicely over at the library. They probably have a couple weeks left. We are working on a small variance for six-inch relief on the lift portion of it to get into the building with the State Office of Elevator Safety or whatever the official organization is. As Stephen mentioned, we are working on the downtown grant, so that's a fall announcement. And the MVP grant that we put in for the 140 pump station should be announced sometime in August. We did put in an ADA grant, cycling back to the 1835 bathroom to make that handicap accessible and compliant bathroom there for full usage. Hopefully, this heat will break. I don't think he's gone, but we got to find a place to bin up and store all the items in that brick building so that we can get that taken care of. School security, those items are moving along for the cameras and doors there. They got that started when school ended. Engineering at 62 and 140 is still moving along. I believe those are the major items. I have a managers' association meeting tomorrow. We, just at the end of June, had our small-town administrators of Massachusetts meeting at Cyprian Keys. Attended the Mass Highway Driver Safety Event today with David, who is a skilled judge. It's nice and warm. But overall, things are going reasonably well. You know, we're trying to fill some of the positions that we do have that are open, hoping that the coming month or so, a conservation agent may be there. It's not quite ready at this point, but yeah, things are moving along.
You mentioned the storing of the items in the brick building. Was Ryan able to get the equipment he needed yet? Is that, is there a timeline for that or just whatever?
No, we still have to do the environmental testing. There's no candidates that we have to worry about, which creates a separate problem, so.
Okay. Any questions for Bill? Yes, just to note that we did skip over a couple of items on our agenda was the appointment of a conservation agent that did not go through, and also the appointment of a FinCom member. So those were, we've run over because we don't have those people here to be appointed. They have pulled out since agreeing to join.
On that note, we are still looking for finance and EDC volunteers.
So anybody who's interested in Finance Committee or EDC, please go online or call Kama and she can give you the information you need and the application to sign up. Got a few more minutes here before we can have our public hearing for our 61A release. So if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak in public session, now would be a great time.
So we can have a recess for 15 minutes.
All this may now for a little bit here.
I'd make a motion that we recess for 12 minutes.
All those in favor?
Smith and I.
You and I?
Grant and I. Are you not going to motion we're talking too slow?
No. We still do have a couple of minutes until we technically can do our public hearing.
But we could talk about what it is, right?
So we have a public hearing for a 61A release for 193 to 195 Justice Hill Road cutoff. The assessors, Conservation Commission, and Planning Board have all declined wanting to obtain the parcel. So, does anybody have any questions?
No, I was just trying to see where exactly it was and it's part of that whole.
Right, so we have nobody here. I don't know that anyone's going to show up in the next couple of minutes, but I do have a question about it and I, oh, just one.
Weather.
Oh, gotcha. So this parcel does not meet the Chapter 61A requirements, so it should not even be up for release. It should have been out of Chapter 61A way back when the other parcels were sold off because it is under the five acres needed to be in Chapter 61A. So I'm not sure how the assessors missed it and left it in Chapter 61A. But I just want to note that it has not been in compliance with 61A. I'm not sure for how long those parcels were sold off, but technically, it should not be in Chapter 61A. Do we have any questions about that or any insight into?
I have none.
Our only job here right now is to, yes, we don't want it, but that is something that you maybe bring it to the assessors and say.
Yes, I'm not sure if there are any other parcels in town that may also not meet Chapter 61A that are in 61A because portions have been sold off. So it is something that I think our assessors should look into because that is potential tax revenue for the town.
Good point.
Absolutely.
All right. So, it being 6:35, I would welcome a motion that we release 193 to 195 Justice Hill Road cutoff in 61A.
So moved.
And to open the hearing. Open the hearing.
Oh, oh. Motion to open the public hearing for 61A release of 193 to 195 Justice Hill Road cutoff.
So moved.
Stephen.
All in favor?
Smith and I.
Grant and I.
You and I? Had some discussion, and I would welcome a motion that we release the 61A land 193, 195 Justice Hill Road cutoff.
So moved.
Stephen.
All in favor?
Smith and I.
You and I?
I'd make a motion we close our public session, our public hearing.
Stephen.
All those in favor?
Smith and I.
You and I?
Grant and I.
Any other business? I think we've handled everything.
I have none.
All right.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Stephen.
All in favor?
Smith and I.
You and I?
Drive safe.